And it's streaming on YouTube. We're going to start the webinar. And we are now live. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Vote 2020, Board of Education, a virtual candidate's forum presenting candidates for the Santa Monica Malibu Board of Education. This forum is being co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund, the League, and the Santa Monica Malibu Council of PTAs. Both co-sponsors are nonpartisan, nonprofit organizations, and never support or oppose candidates for public office. My name is Karen Dunn, and I will be your moderator for this forum. As you probably know, this year, all registered California voters will automatically receive a vote-by-mail ballot early in October, and voters are being encouraged to return their ballots early to make sure they will be received by the registrar's office in time to be counted. For these reasons, we have committed to holding our forums earlier this year. We want you, our voters, to have the opportunity to hear from our local candidates by early October. This year, we have three open seats for four-year terms each. We invited all eight qualified candidates to participate, and we're pleased that all eight have confirmed their attendance. Each candidate participating in tonight's forum will have the opportunity to answer a variety of questions with a maximum of one minute for each response. Questions have been gathered in advance from the co-sponsoring organizations and through community outreach, and will be asked in random order according to a blind matrix created by the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund. Timing this evening will be done by Ms. Kathy Gentile of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica, and I believe Kathy may demonstrate her timing paddles. Again, just for everyone to see. You'll get one in 15 seconds, and you'll get one at the moment of 60 seconds, at which point you should complete your sentence. All candidates participating in tonight's forum have signed a confirmation form committing to standards of civility and courtesy, helping maintain an atmosphere of respect and tolerance throughout the forum. We thank them for agreeing to those terms, and as a moderator, I thank you as well. So let's get to the first round of questions. And for all of the candidates, this is an introduction for you. If elected, you will be part of the governing board or body that makes decisions for the public school students of Santa Monica and Malibu, including our children and grandchildren. So naturally, we'd like to get to know you. So as I call your name, please tell us who you are and why you're running for Board of Education. You each will have one minute to answer, and I'll begin with Keith Coleman.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Gunn. I truly appreciate that. My name is Keith Coleman, and I am running to democratize opportunity for all students and to truly support the progressive values of the residents in this vital and diverse community of Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. I really want us to embrace our robust characteristics and our inherent value and truly inspire hope for a better future. I'm running to be a part of a team of people, listeners and leaders committed to shaping policy and implementing decisions to better humanity through a prism of education, helping others to be their best self. Now, I come from a family of educators. My mom was an educator. My father was a clinical professor. My aunt was an LA County Ed. My many other family cousins are principals and educators, so it's a call to serve for me to be here with these other candidates today.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman, Jason Feldman.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. Thank you for having me. I'm a civil rights attorney with a long history of public service. A seat on the Santa Monica Malibu School Board is an extension of my commitment to serve the public good, but in this case, my clients are the families of Santa Monica. My wife and I have our own two elementary school-aged daughters and understand firsthand the need to invest in the future of our community. As a civil rights attorney, I've made a career fighting for the underdog. As a deputy district attorney, I prosecuted abusers on behalf of domestic violence victims. As a criminal defense attorney, I've accepted court appointments and defend indigent members of our community. And as a civil attorney, I have protected women and minorities from discrimination and enforced prisoners' rights. And now I want to fight for the students and families of Santa Monica.
Thank you. Esther Hickman.
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Esther Hickman, and I'm a full-time working parent. I went to schools in this district, K through 12. I attended Juan Cabrillo, Malibu Park, Santa Monica High School, and UCLA. I'm first generation. My mother's from Ecuador, and I'm Austrian. My father's from Austria. I'm running because I believe in public schools, and I want my child and every child in this district to receive the extraordinary experience and wealth of opportunities that I did. If elected, it will be my first and ongoing priority to adopt a culture of accountability, transparency, and community engagement. I believe it's possible for one of the wealthiest districts in California to serve the unique needs of each and every child in our schools. If elected, I would view myself as a public servant above all else, serving students, teachers, parents, the staff, and taxpayers.
Thank you. Stephen Johnson.
Hi, I'm Stephen Johnson. I have lived in Santa Monica for 25 years. I've been a district parent, K through 12. My daughter went to Grant Elementary, JAM's Middle School, Samo High, and she's now at Saint Olaf College in Minnesota. My wife is Emily Arms, and she teaches part-time transfer-level English at SMC. For the last 13 years, Emily and I have put our energies in volunteering at the site level. We did Grant PTA. We put on the Grant Talent Show. We were on Grant Site Council. We were producers of JAM Smash Theater. I was on the Science Magnet Board. I led Hour of Code seminars, chaperoned trips to Disneyland and Japan and Morro Bay. And in high school, we were theater committee, theater steering committee, choir steering committee, and co-chairs of the Sweet Serenade Online Auction. I coached soccer, girls softball, boys rugby. My main focus, again, you're going to hear this a lot tonight, bringing transparency and accountability to the district, to the board. And I also have a passion. There's my stop sign.
Thank you. Maria Leon Vasquez.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity. Maria Leon Vasquez, I've been an advocate in this community for social justice, education, and housing for over 40 years. My family moved in from Mexico in 1959, and I have gone to schools here through Santa Monica College, through UC San Diego, and to law school at UC Hastings College of Law. I am here to promote and to continue the great work we've done in meeting the mission of our district, which is extraordinary achievement for all students while opening those opportunity gaps for most children. And one of the main pieces here is that with COVID, things have changed. So my leadership and experience that I will bring to this district, to this board as a team, will hopefully expand and give us more opportunities to be able to survive the changes that will be coming with a new normal in the next year or years to come. I'm here, and I've been here available for all families, and especially for a lot of the families that are not English speakers, that are Spanish speakers. Spanish was my first native language, and I've been here as their voice in this community because there are still a lot of immigrant families in this district.
Thank you. Dunn May.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Dunn May, and I'm a veteran teacher. And to my knowledge, I'm the only candidate who has extensive or even any public school teaching experience. I'm a Samo High graduate, a parent of Samo High graduates, a holder of a master's degree in mathematics, and a member of the Zoroastrian community, which is one of the world's smallest communities. My background gives me a unique perspective on current district issues. If elected, in addition to participating in usual school board business, I will begin advocating for simple, doable, mostly inexpensive practices that will promote social justice, academic success, health, and financial benefit to our eminent district. I'm running so as to make a positive lasting difference to our community.
Thank you. Jennifer Smith.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for having me. I am running to further the mission of public education and to continue to be a voice in this district for student and families. I've been advocating in this district for all students for over a decade. I have been the PTA president at two school sites. I have been the PTA council president for Santa Monica and Malibu. I have chaired two campaigns to bring in voter-approved funding that adds funding to the general fund of our district and bond measures that are rebuilding our schools. I am on the superintendent's advisory committee. I am on the facilities district advisory committee. I am the co-chair of grad night at Samo High. I have run the summer adventure program for registration through the PTA and Education Foundation. I and I think that with my background, my experience, my dedication, my ability to reach out for community, I can serve well.
Thank you. And let me explain to the candidates, as well as those of you watching, Mr. John Keen, who is also a candidate, hasn't been able to join us yet. He had to attend a funeral, a sudden death of a very close friend, and he's in flight as we speak and trying to get to 10,000 feet, which maybe some of the rest of us would like to do as well. And once he gets there, he may join us. So I wanted to explain that to everyone in terms of his absence. Let me move on to the second question. This question will also go to each of you, and again, you'll have one minute to respond. This is a question similar to the one in an earlier forum. Let me begin by asking. Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District is now officially an anti-racist school district. What does that mean? How will you, as one of seven school board members, ensure that all SMMUSD students receive a solid anti-racist education? I'll begin with Ms. Smith.
So, well, I think we're building on our anti-racism agenda for our school district. We have social justice we have social justice curriculum in place that has just started, and we need to go deep, and we need to go wide, and we need to make sure that it's pre-K through 12th grade and make sure that kids are getting the level of curriculum that is meant to be had to be able to see themselves in their education and see themselves being taught their education. I think we need to eliminate the barriers that create lack of opportunities for kids of any color. We need to I think that we need to build on our ability to sorry, that's we need to build on our ability to create an environment for everyone to be able to be successful in schools.
Thank you. Ms. May.
Thank you. So, yes, I would say, you know, we should be colorblind. Okay, we should go by Martin Luther King's statement, which told us to judge a person by his character, not by his skin. We should realize that we're all children of God. We have a lot of potential. We should try to encourage relationships with people of other races. For example, during Black History Month, children can be encouraged to make at least one friend who is a black friend. During the Hispanic Heritage Month, make a friend who is a Hispanic person, and so on. We can encourage these positive relationships and positive thoughts and teach science and history and health through the lens of truth with the ideal of one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Leon Vasquez.
Well, I would like to believe that our district was always a non-racist kind of district, that we didn't have to come out with, you know, personal, specific statements. But in the last three years, we have instituted the social justice framework. And with that is a development of American culture's ethnic studies programming and for professional development for all our staff and teachers. This is really something that is real crucial because it's hard to teach people because it has to come from people's hearts to understand what human beings are and people who people are, people of color. And this country is made up of people of different races in different countries. This is what makes the United States so unique. I've had the success in that I worked specifically in the last two years, three years with a D-LAC, with a Spanish-speaking families who feel marginalized and mainly because of them being Mexican and the others because of language situations. But I think we are doing a good job in terms of moving forward an agenda that's hopefully going to bring and gather all of us together to understand that we will not tolerate any, you know, racism in
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I think we're all going to agree that if there was ever a time for us as a district to adopt an anti-racist platform, that time is now. I've read through the curriculum that has been adopted, the social justice standards, and they come from the Southern Poverty Law Center. Their key themes are identity, diversity, justice, and action. And I think those are themes that are really well-suited to our district and its pursuit of social justice. We are a truly diverse district, more so than any comparable district, given our resources, given our reputation. We represent a mix of folk that is also very close to the mix of the county at large. I think that some past initiatives we've had were slogans and workshops with no follow-through. I think this time, we have to make it happen. This time, we have to have the willingness to teach the hard history and do so in a way that engages our students and arms them with facts and not just feelings.
Thank you. Ms. Hickman.
Yes, I think we all can agree that these anti-racist curriculums are very relevant, and they should be ongoing. And as a district, we need to make a commitment that we're going to keep on following through and seeing the progress. And I think we also can go, it's very difficult right now with COVID, but I think that we can go beyond just curriculums, teaching people awareness and facts and bringing to light experiences that other groups are having, but also having creative solutions. And just as people come together through music and art and youth groups and communities of faith, we can have ways in which groups can come together in a challenging situation and find common ground and realize that we all need each other and building those relationships and things from the heart. Just like Maria said, that's going to be what's going to solve this problem. But we need to keep on working on it.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman.
Thank you. You know, being an anti-racist district requires some proactive action. It's not just being neutral on race or not being prejudiced. It's the commitment to root out any incidence of hatred, bigotry, and unfairness. There is a new race in social justice curriculum. We need to figure out a way to evaluate its effectiveness. And I think importantly, it's not to teach our children what to think, but how to think, how to be critical thinkers, to be able to think for themselves and to decide how they're going to be members of our community in a harmonious way. We also need to really check ourselves. There have been a lot of incidents recently on the Dear Samo High web platform. We need to examine ourselves, and the district needs to lead by example. If the district wants to enforce tolerance, it needs to be tolerant. If it wants to enforce fairness, it needs to be fair. We need to look into every instance where there's been racial bias, and we need to examine the root cause and start a discussion and understanding.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
Thank you so much for that question. I think we actually want to ask ourselves some more questions to make the claim that the city has moved forward on an anti-racist platform, maybe a statement, but I mean, who is that really for? Interestingly enough, we talk about social justice standards and that these curriculum are being pushed out to students. And yet, I think it's actually the adults that need to take a better look and do some more soul-searching with respect to where do these kids get these frames of reference from in the first place? And you can't just blame it on media. You can't just blame it on entertainment companies or, you know, folks getting recruited online by supremacist groups and things such as that. I think the adults too need to do that soul-searching and do that deep work relative to that. You know, I hear about Heritage Month, and maybe we can do things in these months. My son's 12. He asked me last year in school, "Why is Black History only one month?" I mean, you know, there's so many micro-invalidations or microaggressions that occur every day that actually continue to support systemic racism in unwitting ways and some not-so-unwitting that people really need to look at.
Thank you. Let me move to the next round of questions. And for this round, there will be two questions, and four of you will get one and four of you will get a different one, but they pivot around generally the same topic. So for the first one of these two, the question will be directed at Mr. Coleman, Ms. Leon Vasquez, and Mr. Feldman. So here's the lead-in. Every election cycle, we hear candidates talk about making sure taxpayers' money is kept, and this is in quotes, "close to the classroom." There are different ways to define what that means. If the election goes the way you hope and you are elected, you will be one of seven board members responsible for making important budget decisions. Mr. Coleman, Ms. Leon Vasquez, Mr. Feldman, the question is, in these days of COVID and distance learning, how would you define, quote, "close to the classroom"? I'll begin with Mr. Coleman.
Thank you for that question. As I heard you describe taxpayer money and keeping those monies close to the classroom. Well, whether there was COVID or not, you know, that's actually a subject matter that's really more relative to where funding goes in districts' budget matters. Many years ago, I worked on a Proposition BB campaign, and LA Unified Stool District was the largest proposition bond in history at that time. Most of that money went to facilities and went to contractors and developers. And so in being mindful of where budget monies goes, I think that that's a real critical issue. Clearly, I support teachers having increased pay so that they can have a sustainable quality of life and live near the district. But we want to ensure that those funds are being deployed in manners which actually benefit the end user and benefit the student. And so as a board member, that would be my primary focus is to see how those dollars are directed at and towards benefiting the well-being of students.
Thank you. Ms. Leon Vasquez.
Well, funding comes from several sources. And you've mentioned funding that comes from property, from bond monies, and then others that are coming from tax monies from the state. And basically, when the monies that we're looking at for bonds are there for bond constructions, and we can't take that money away from what it's there for, for development. However, the monies that we're talking about that really support the main funding of this district must go to teachers and must go to support whatever is going to be necessary to be able to continue our education programming under COVID. There's going to be a lot of things coming up, up the pipeline, that we have no understanding how that will be, but we're going to need to support whatever the needs are to be able to open up our classrooms whenever we're ready to open, when the county says we're ready to open. And we need to provide the resources enough to be able to open the classrooms, give PPE to teachers, give whatever is necessary so that we can contribute to the opening of the schools and give our children a great education. And like I said, that is something that is really dear to me, that we're going to be hopefully budgeted according to what is necessary for the success of the future education of our children.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman.
Thank you. So keeping funding close to the classroom in times of COVID. Well, first of all, COVID is not going to last forever, but one way that can be done is to use some of those funds to get us back to in-person learning. There are expenditures that are needed in order to do that. I would choose teachers over consultants. Avoid teacher layoffs. Avoid eliminating special education aids to classrooms. Refocus on early education. And, you know, when talking about bond money, keeping it close to classrooms, one of the ways to do that and allow the community to monitor that is to be transparent in how we are spending our bond money to make sure that it's kept close to the classroom and allowing, you know, parents and members of the community that are watching to keep it close to the classroom.
Thank you. So the next question is for the remaining four of you. Here's the intro to the question. During this semester of distance learning, SMMUSD, teachers have done a fantastic job delivering instruction in the midst of a pandemic and have used various new platforms to great effect. Nonetheless, our teachers are working longer hours than ever and have children at home doing distance learning in a variety of circumstances. So the question is, how can the school district best support teachers at this time and keep them from burning out? I'll begin with you, Ms. May.
Thank you. Well, I think we can work towards in-person learning, but in the meantime, teachers could be given breaks. I think the district can increase its funding possibly by just certain measures that will increase parent satisfaction and keep our schools more competitive with private schools. You know, the things like LAUSD has done, like the vegan options, trying to reduce children's exposure to radiation from wireless devices, even though that is hard to do at a time when distance learning is being implemented. But with wire technology being promoted, parent satisfaction may increase. Perhaps taking a stand against certain mandatory things such as mandatory vaccinations, which is a fairly new thing. We did have a religious exemption about five years ago. Things that will give parents some satisfaction that there's social justice for those who can't afford homeschooling, that even if
Thank you. Ms. Hickman.
Well, I've heard that teachers have been doing an awesome job. And so I'd like to thank all the teachers who have been working during this difficult time supporting their students. I think first and foremost, I think it would be critical to engage with these teachers and find out what they want and what they see the solutions as. Because I don't think it is because we haven't heard their voice in the matter, or at least it hasn't been transparent and brought to the community. So I think this is just part of, again, adopting a culture of transparency and community engagement and find out what is best and what the solutions are, come to an agreement, and follow through and support our teachers through it.
Thank you. Ms. Smith. Thank you. Ms. Smith.
So I think that the teachers have been doing a fabulous job and I have two kids sitting at home and listening in on their conversations. They really are remarkable. I do think we need to listen to their concerns and I think the district has listened to their concerns. I think we need to be flexible in how they are bringing their teaching online and be flexible with professional development with them because they all don't need the same thing. So we have to understand their needs and give them the platforms to use and have them be able to have flexible time for professional development to make sure that they're getting what they need to get to be able to deliver this kind of teaching to the kids. I also think, I'm happy to hear that we are creating childcare for teachers. I know some teachers are working on campus. So for them to have their kids close to them and be able to teach and then see their kids and help them with their distance learning, but also have a place for them to be with people overlooking them and helping them as well is really critical. They just need to have peace of mind to make sure their kids are getting what they need and giving the kids that they're teaching what they need as well.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Sure. I'd like to congratulate the teachers on their ingenuity. I feel like without a whole lot of tech support, all of my teacher friends have been posting on Facebook and sharing with each other tips and tricks on ways of having second screen experiences, be able to have the gallery view and Zoom on one TV while you're teaching on another, using an iPod Touch to do a screenshot of the work that you're presenting and since you don't have a chalkboard, things like that. So the ingenuity is amazing. It speaks to a lack of tech support frankly, but it was a difficult time. So I think moving forward, we should do a lot more. I know that was tricky to transition and there wasn't a lot we could do at the time last spring, but since then, there's a lot more we can do. One thing I would emphasize is as we move into the options of what to do next, the one proposal was to switch, outsource distance learning. I wouldn't allow, as a board member, I would not allow that. I would make sure that we have live instruction even in a distance learning scenario.
Thank you. So let me turn to the next round. And by way of explanation, I'm going to describe a scenario for all of you to think about. And then I'll have one question for you all, a subset of you to talk about from one angle related to that scenario and another question for the remaining four of you from a different angle. So here's the scenario. When LA County allows for a return to in-person schooling and the school district has put all safety protocols and equipment in place, there must be a reopening model that allows small cohorts of students to be taught in the classroom while providing distance instruction for students at home. I will be asking all of you to describe clearly what you think an ideal reopening model should look like for both teachers and students, but with a different focus. So here's the first question and it will be directed at Ms. Leon Vasquez, Mr. Coleman and Ms. Smith. Here's the first angle. Please describe what you think an ideal reopening model should look like for both teachers and students and, and this is underlined in my script, please address priority issues you identify with regard to synchronous or live instruction versus asynchronous or non-live instruction. Let me begin with Mrs. Leon Vasquez.
Well, my ideal return back to the classroom would be, and we've tried different scenarios from hybrids to asynchronous, synchronous, but the best one I've heard so far is being able to streamline in a classroom. So in other words, everybody would be having, every student will have a live instruction from the same teacher. So we can set up each of the classrooms with cameras so that those students that want to come, because not everybody's going to be allowed to come back into the classroom, can't do that. But if we can have at least 50% of those kids in a classroom and we were 20 to 15 children in a classroom, the rest at home, but that both, that same classroom can maintain with the same teacher with a live stream education and the teacher, you know, again, providing their assignments online, I mean, on camera for those at home and live for those in the classroom. I know it might be a little costly, but I think we have to look at those scenarios because be able to do a hybrid where students might be all in synchronous on one week, one day, and it's just, it's not going to work, it's too much volatility.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
Thank you for that question. The application of a synchronous model that is on campus is soon to be deployed. This is being done in particular with respect to English learners and providing them more deeper support. They'll be actually on campus with an adult supervisor, but actually be learning through digital means along with the rest of the class. And so I think that's an example of how one can be on campus and still actually learn digitally if necessary. I think that having a complementary nature of synchronous and asynchronous learning, actually there is benefit to that. Having a asynchronous model actually can allow students to go back and look at things in their own way and provide them with their own self-agency and efficacy in terms of their own sense of learning. So I think that having a combinatorial effect of both synchronous and asynchronous learning can be effective if the logistics are worked out well in terms of the teacher's platform and the teacher's playbook.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
So I too like the live streaming, but I think that there has to be some ability to be flexible and understand the situations that come about. So a teacher might not be able to, due to her ability to come live on campus, might be doing that from home. Would the kids be in school doing that? Who would be in the classroom with them? I think that, I think, and I think we have to separate secondary and elementary school. I think elementary school, as a matter, when we started hearing about what a return to the classroom in elementary school might be, which is that some kids would be at home with live, with teachers online and some kids could be in school, understanding what teachers would be at home, different classrooms, separating different classrooms and that those would be, those would be options. I think in the secondary, we have to start slowly. I think also starting with the distance learning and bringing small cohorts in for different types of classes or different electives like drama and band could be a way to start.
Thank you. So for the remaining four of you, let me read your question. Please describe clearly what you think an ideal reopening model should look like for both teachers and students. And for this perspective, we'd like you to address the priority issues regarding scheduling for all levels. And I'll begin with Mr. Feldman.
Thank you. Well, as the father of two elementary school daughters, you know, I'm not only anxious for my children to return to school, but it has to be under safe conditions. So what's the optimal? It's that it's safe and that it's a good learning environment. We can learn from the successful reopenings in other countries like Denmark and Uruguay, as well as the less successful reopening in countries such as Israel. There's no shortage of ideas. There could be tents and other covered structures, daily temperature checks, hand washing, mask wearing. The live streaming is a great idea. It requires planning and time. You know, combined with opening slowly, limiting class sizes. You know, Israel, for example, experienced outbreaks when they loosened those restrictions on class sizes. So basically, we know what works and these strategies only work though when the numbers in our communities continue to go down, which it is. And no matter what the plan is, we're going to need more space and money. You know, right now, in order to practice social distancing, we need twice as much space to house our current student population.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I know that you're asking this question about what we think we would do moving forward. I want to kind of highlight the fact that our district leadership has been working on this since pretty much this entire thing started. And I feel like you're asking us this now, but we shouldn't even have to be responding because the options should already be in place. Other districts already have plans. Other districts have already had their committees, published their findings and proposed things that have built consensus with our community. We have done nothing except release a survey on September 10th that offered two options, two completely unacceptable and appalling options that nobody wants, a hybrid option that might be no more than one hour per week of in-person learning and a distance learning option that outsourced our child's online education. So any ideal return to campus is going to involve a lot of trust by our parents and our stakeholders. I think a lot of that trust is already not there and we're going to have to work really hard to rebuild it.
Thank you. Ms. May.
So there are simple measures that will help, such as proper ventilation, soap where it's appropriate, allowing the children to get plenty of fresh air and exercise, giving them information about how to strengthen their immune systems, such as taking vitamin C, vitamin D, zinc, mushrooms, other plant-based foods and proper exercise and fresh air again and a good social and spiritual life and so on. And to definitely emphasize that anybody who is sick should not come to school, even though that means that the district loses a little bit of money. That should become a very clearly emphasized point. If you're even slightly sick, don't come. But those who do come, I think, should not be always required to wear masks. According to Dr. Russell Bailoff and many others, masks can actually cause health problems. Okay, there is a video out now that talks about the mask, the great mask ripoff and so on.
Thank you. Ms. Hickman.
Okay. So I think that a safe return, ideally, it's safe and there are, so I don't know how that's going to happen. I do know that it, for me, in as a role, as a board member, the solutions, it doesn't really matter what I think is ideal. It matters what the community and the consensus and the buy-in is. And from the very, very beginning, there hasn't been transparency. When the pandemic first came about, that's when the community should have been engaged for a plan, the teachers and the parents and the district. And so for me to say what's ideal, I think, would be disingenuous because we need to continue to engage the community and solidify a plan and then roll out what is the consensus, the agreement. And of course, we have to follow the safety and the science. And ideally, we can all return to the classroom sooner than later.
Thank you. So let me move to the next question, which will be directed at all of you. So the intro to the question is this. If elected, you will be one of seven decision makers. So you will not be in a position to unilaterally make decisions about the school district and enforce them. But that said, we'd like you to indulge a dream. And so this question again is for all of you. Here you go. You're given absolute authority over the school district for one day, one day to do one thing. What do you do? And so let's skip the argument that that's not realistic. We're asking you to dream. What would you do on that one day and what one thing would you do? And I'll begin with Mr. Feldman.
What a fascinating question. I think, you know, I would love to get, you know, kind of a continuation of the question on anti-racism. I would love to get the entire student population or groups of the student population together and talk about ourselves and our identity and how we fit into the community as a whole. I'd like to, I'd like to form a closer, more tight-knit student body community with the teachers and just have an open dialogue and discussion about honoring diversity and each other and our differences.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. So I'll have a little fun with it, but be truthful too. I think it should be a little bit of a Freaky Friday. I'd like to see every kid in a regular class switch with kids in the AP classes and get that real high-quality instruction and demanding instruction. And then also for the AP kids to see what's happening in regular classes. I want the music kids to go and do their sports classes, be in all the sports classes. I want all the kids in sports to go and get a lesson, a voice lesson with Mr. Holes or learn to play an instrument with Jason or Kevin. And I'd like to see switching around. If you're in French class, you go take the Spanish class. You're in Spanish class, go take the French class. I'd like to see that kind of Freaky Friday would be great. And same thing with the teachers. If you're a high school teacher, go teach some elementary school. If you're a elementary school teacher, go teach some high school.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
Thank you for that compelling question. It's interesting to listen to the other candidates talk about interaction with students. And I agree with that. But my one day of absolute authority would be having the adults and the students actually having conversations and sharing and expressing themselves in a free and open forum such that there's no repercussions, there's no power vectors, there's no hierarchy, there's no sense of oppression. And in that way, perhaps there'll be better and newer trust coming from the students for the adults. And hopefully, the adults themselves will have a refreshed sense of their responsibility and love for the student. And so that would be my hope, to have young folks and not-so-young folks actually be able to have a dynamic and fruitful and positive interaction.
Thank you. Ms. Leon Vasquez.
Well, coming from my career education background, I would, you know, I would really hope that we could have, that I really miss, because in the last few years, all my children that were in high school, is to have like a rally, to go out to the amphitheater and have all the classes be present and everybody really enjoy the happy times the high school experience is all about. You know, you've gone to school for almost, what, eight years and you have four years of culmination at a high school. And so it would be great if we could go back and enjoy the thrills and the fun of being there and almost reaching your goals and having like a career day made up of the faculty. The teachers there would come and share their experiences while they were going to college and, you know, graduate schools and where they were coming from to really get to know the students. You know, coming from, you know, following up from Keith Coleman's statement that, yeah, we should gather the adults with our students to have them meet and really get to know who their teachers are and how they are successful, they were successful in making them to teach in the classroom.
Thank you. Ms. May.
Yes, thank you. So one thing I would like to see would be a break for the children from exposure to radiation from wireless devices. Even in kindergarten now, sometimes there's a smart board, a whole cart of Chromebooks being charged and a smart board and a router right in the classroom. And this is very concerning, according to some scientists, for their health. I would also like to see reading of information and stories, such as The Emperor's New Clothes, The Gift of the Magi, other stories and books that would increase critical thinking and harmony and have perhaps a moment of silence, which has been practiced in many states, in 19 states at least, with great success. And I would just like to see children get the information that perhaps is not usually imparted to them. Again, like what I mentioned before about how they can strengthen their immune systems and also give them a chance to interact with people of other races. Have that be a day of friendship and love.
Thank you. Ms. Hickman.
Well, I just loved everybody's answers and thank you for warming my heart and making me smile. Well, I just loved everybody's answers and thank you for warming my heart and making me smile. So they were wonderful answers. My answer is so boring and pragmatic. My dream is for smaller class sizes because it breaks my heart that students and teachers could possibly be missing out on deep connections with one another. And I want students to be having these connections with each other and learning and growing and finding common ground with one another. So, and smaller class sizes for better educational outcomes and behavioral outcomes. And, and I would love for the board and the district to come to an agreement, what that looks like and get community engagement to understand what, with teachers, what that would look like.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. So I too loved everybody's ideas and just to put something just as out there, that's not any of those ideas, which a lot of, which were, there were a lot of good ones. I'd like to see everybody pick something to volunteer with, whatever they find the passion of. If it's environmental, if it's teaching, if it's, you know, whatever helping hand they feel passionate about to gather with other people who feel passionate about that as well and understand and get that feeling of giving, that giving back is such an amazing thing to your community. Where many kids do it already, I know, but, but some, some don't and some, and the little ones get to start understanding what that feels like, what that looks like, how to get there, who to go to to help them do that. And there, there'll be, there are always many opportunities, but to encompass everyone, to be able to give back to their community and how to do it is really empowering for kids and gives them leadership qualities and, and purpose to, to their education.
Thank you. So let me move to the next round. And in this case, there will be different questions entirely given to different subsets. So the first question will be directed at Ms. May, Ms. Leon Vasquez, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Smith. So the lead-in to the question is, parent and family involvement is one of the eight priority areas that must be included in the local control accountability plan, I guess otherwise known as LCAP. It is also an important part of the district's Title I work. The question, how would you, as a school board member in these times of COVID-19, work to enhance or make more effective the district's ongoing efforts to engage parents and families, particularly those who were historically not involved and are still underrepresented? Ms. May, I'll begin with you.
Thank you. So like I said before, I think the mask-wearing when in-person instruction begins should be left to the parents is one way that parents can be empowered. Another way is regarding the sex education curriculum. Parents should have easy access to the actual contents because if they did have that access, some of them would, would want it changed or want his or her child to be excluded from it. As it stands, children are automatically provided with this curriculum. If, if a parent does not actually in writing ask that the child be excluded, unlike the permission a, a parent would give for a field trip, in which case a parent actually has to sign a consent in order for the child to be allowed to go on a field trip. Well, sex education and there are other curriculum materials also that fall in the same category in a way. It's even more important in a way than, than a field trip. So therefore, parents should actually give explicit consent and not just have the burden of having to...
Thank you. Ms. Leon Vasquez?
Well, that's a good question, Dr. again. And the district has already begun to do a lot that outreach to a lot of families. We hired a family engagement coordinator a couple of years ago and she hit the ground running. And she's been fantastic in terms of, of being able to do a lot of trainings with a lot of the families, with African-American families, with the Latino families and in particular, the Latino families in Spanish. So that, again, engaging those families to become more involved with the education of their children, to get involved with leadership in their schools. I have been particularly taken, taking part in the meetings that they've had with, with English language learner families and engaging with them. And I actually had a meeting with them in August to ask, you know, their concerns as we were moving into distance learning. And in the fall, what needs that they need to, and I had it all in Spanish with, for them and got a lot of good feedback. So this, all it is, is getting involved with their coordinator to make sure you're involved with a lot of the community meetings that are happening. And I have done that and I will...
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Sure. Parent engagement, community involvement, communication. These, these are serious problems with our district. There's no way around it. Some of the committees you mentioned, their only participants are handpicked. There's no way very often to apply if you are not one of the people who's been chosen to be on those committees. We have a district office that holds parent and teacher input in low regard. We have, community engagement is seen as an undue burden. And communications, again, like I said, is, is an afterthought. We, there's no one place to find out where the meetings are, when they are. You have non-searchable databases of agendas and things like that. And frankly, a lot of the information that's being generated through these parent and teacher engagements, you have to do a public records request to even find out what was talked about. We have a whole summer of input about return to campus that is a mystery. It's a secret. Nobody even...
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
So, so in, and I think in this time of COVID, I'm actually kind of a little excited about what we've discovered in this Zoom scenario. The PTA Council brought something to our school sites called School Smarts. And it starts very young with kids in kindergarten and preschool, bringing parents in to understand how schools function. They, it's, it's an eight-week session and it seems, and it was limited. People had to sign up. You had to get people to come. But with this accessibility that people can have at home, it seems like, and it's at school site. So you start at your school site and you start to understand what your engagement can look like, what it needs to look like, what teacher, how, how to talk to your teachers, how to talk to your principal. How to, so I feel like this is such an opportunity for us to be able to expand to every single parent at every single school site to be able to understand how to successfully get their kids through school. It's School Smarts, that's all I'll say.
Thank you. So the next question is for the remaining, of those of you sitting here, candidates, that is. We have received a number of questions asking about the school district's project-based learning or PBL model and how you as candidates for school board would prioritize it. So your question has three parts. One, what is your understanding of the PBL model? Two, do you support it? Or are you still considering? And three, how would you prioritize this program in our district? Complicated question. One minute. I'll begin with Ms. Hickman.
Thank you. You asked, what's my understanding? How would I prioritize it? And what was the last one?
Do you support it?
Do I support it? Well, that is a very, very complicated situation. So I understand it as, and I don't obviously know all the details, but I understand it as project-based learning, an extension of what SMASH is. And, and the district, the parents and the community at SMASH loves SMASH and being there and are thrilled that it was extended to high school. So I know parents at SMASH and I know people, I'm sorry, at PBL. And I know that people are excited about it. Ooh, priorities. So I don't know how it came to fruition, but I do know that there has been a planning problem. And what scares me is that now all of our programs are at risk. So...
Thank you very much. Mr. Feldman? Complicated question.
Yes, thank you for the question. So project-based learning is, you know, as, as Ms. Hickman described, it's, it's not your traditional reading, writing, arithmetic. It's where you take some kind of project and you learn, whether it's city planning or building a volcano, something along those lines where you have a project. And the theory is that it will close the achievement gap because it doesn't have language biases and other things built into it. And, and I, I agree with that instinctually. The problem is there's no data to support that. There's been no studies that show that minority students, for example, or socio-economically challenged students will thrive more in project-based learning. Instinctively, it, it, it sounds correct, but, but the data just isn't there. So I, I, I would want to look into it more before it's prioritized.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Yes, I'm a supporter of project-based learning. And actually, there is a load of data that really recognizes that student-centered kind of pedagogy that focuses in on a dynamic classroom approach works. All we have to do is look at the D-School at Stanford, the design school that was founded by Professor David Kelly, good friend of Steve Jobs, and the D-School and their focus on human-centric design. We're using it every day and we don't even know it. And so, and as a matter of fact, some of the most exciting courses actually at Stanford are D-School classes. And so project-based learning in that format works. There are real-world challenges for students to solve and collaborative teams. And so industry is using this. Institutions of higher learning are using this and they're using it well so that these students can be prepared for 21st century industry and for them to be entrepreneurs and flourish in...
Thank you. So let me turn to the next question, which will be directed at all of you. And this question comes from a district parent. She says, "In our neighborhoods, social media, and also from some friends, I have been seeing advertisements for teacher and tutors for learning pods. These are groups of friends with school-aged children hiring teachers to teach small groups of students. No one can blame these parents, especially given our current situation. But it is easy to see that this creates an inequality that will further exaggerate the learning gaps that already exist." Here's the question. What would you propose to do as a school board member to work with the full board and staff to assure equity for our low-income students who parents, whose parents cannot afford to hire teachers or tutors and whose parents are not even home because they are essential workers? I'll begin this round with Mr. Johnson.
Sure. I, I would say the board is already, the district has already started to address this. One of the proposals is to leverage the CREST model and be able to create experiences for kids to gather together during the school day to address issues like parents who work and podding. At Malibu, they, the Boys and Girls Club has become involved with the same kind of offerings and that is clearly going to help. That's going to make a big difference. I think the parent who wrote the question is right. It's hard to fault the parents who are acting in their own kids' best interests, but you would want to counter that, not counter that, but support the kids for whom that's not the easiest, fastest thing to do. So it's underway. There are probably more options that we could pursue, but that, that's kind of what we would do in our district for now.
Thank you. Ms. Hickman?
So I think prioritizing those who need it most is the natural thing that a society does when they care about one another and after-school programs. And we, we have so many examples of organizations that do small groups well. I never left group care for my child. She is, she's been at the Y for preschool this entire time. I did have her in a district preschool. And so there are examples of things and ways that we can move forward for those who need it now.
Thank you. Ms. Mrs. Leon Vasquez?
Well, I think the first and foremost, I think we would need to, to do a quick assessment for many of the students that I believe that were already, you know, behind in, in their curriculum, you know, and their studies before we got into pandemic and then assessing them now where we, where they are, where they are at now. And really support them by, I think we need to bring in our own particular tutors to really support those children. And whether they're going to be the maneuvering of, of some of our staff that was no longer maybe available to be in the classroom, that we're going to bring those back and be in a sense of the tutors and create the pods within the, within the district in collaboration with, you know, you have the Boys and Girls Club, you have PAL, you have various community organizations that are out there. But I think the school district has to take the lead in terms of the programming, the academic programming to support these children to make sure they can get ahead, especially for those that don't have the resources to hire their own particular, you know, tutors and, and teachers in these pods. It's nothing new.
Thank you. Ms. Ms. May?
So helpful. But in terms of the idea of a pod with a limited number of students, you know, many classes already have that situation, actually, such as special education classes that may only have about 10 or so. So the need there is more in terms of improving health and engaging parents so that they feel comfortable, so that they want to keep their children in the public schools, providing whole-food, balanced, vegan options, for example, just like Los Angeles Unified School District has been doing for three years now, is one thing that helps families with low incomes because they often don't have access to some of these things as much as people with higher incomes. Also, the idea of lowering exposure to radiation because the lower-income kids oftentimes have smart meters at their homes. They don't have a landline phone. They don't have a wired computer. They might even live near multiple...
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
So, thank you. You know, it, it's interesting that this question comes up and it's not, I mean, it's an issue that we're always dealing with, that's always at play in our society, that, that tutoring in pods now is just taking the place of SAT tutoring and, and the things of that nature. I think meeting children at their needs is how we attack it while this is happening and while it's not. And obviously, the most vulnerable kids who, who would need access to digital learning and access to computers and Wi-Fi and all that stuff, making sure that, and then bringing kids in as we can in a safe environment, the most vulnerable kids first, to be able to make sure that they are receiving the, the, they're getting their needs met. And if it can be in person, that would be great. But I think what we do is we continue to better our programs, better our teaching skills, better our, to make sure that every kid is getting what they need.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you so much. I think we want to reframe what this question is about. As I heard, the, the question described as, in our neighborhood, we saw teachers in pods and et cetera. This is a private sector issue. This is an individual choice issue. Doesn't really sound like it's a third-party vendor issue, whether my son's part of the Boys and Girls family. That's not what this is about. This is an equity issue and it's about values. And so if people in this community really think they're about servant leadership, if they really think that they're about paying it forward, then I think they themselves that have that financial bandwidth... then I think they themselves that have that financial bandwidth to do so should help bring these kids into those teacher pod networks, check in with those, be a real neighbor, you know? This is about a collective impact. If we're talking about being holistic, people should bring them into the teacher pods that they are part of and that they are paying for, right? Not parcel it out to some third-party vendor, right? And say that they're, they're still a separate but equal. I think that if people really feel this, that they need to bring these individuals that are marginalized and don't have those resources into those teacher pod networks, check in with them and have them be a part of that learning opportunity because of their financial resources and their financial wherewithal.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman.
Thank you. First of all, you can never underestimate the lengths parents will go for their children. It's not surprising in these extraordinary times that these private pods have sprung up. And what it, what it does is it accentuates the need, uh, to provide a safety net for our vulnerable students. I mean, we already knew that. But when you see the example of what, um, other students have access to, it only emphasizes that even more. Counseling services, uh, you know, public pods, um, you know, continuing the lunch program, things, things that are being done, uh, internet access, and, uh, you know, for kids with IEPs and special education students, then it just needs to be a little extra help, aid, assistance for those students that, uh, that are, are the most vulnerable. We, we, we don't want to cut the knees out of the parents trying to help their, help, help their, their children. But we do need, it's a call to action to, to, to help our children that are at the most vulnerable.
Thank you very much. Let me move on to the next question, and this is for everyone. Uh, the school district communicates to parents and guardians through a number of platforms, yet is sometimes criticized for encouraging little or no parent feedback about district and board policy, and has been accused of being unresponsive to parent emails. The question, is this criticism fair or unfair? How can the district support even better two-way communication? And I'm going to begin this round with Ms. Hickman.
I think of that, the, the criticism is fair. There would not be so many, uh, parents standing up to say that we have not been heard. There hasn't been any regard for what we've been saying. Um, I've been involved in this in a very short time. I have heard that over and over again. So it's a consistent message. So it's true that it's happening. And decisions are being made behind closed doors. And, um, again, it just goes by everything that I think needs to change as a culture with this board and district, which is that all communications need to be transparent. The community needs to be engaged before decisions are made. And as a board member, if I were elected, that would be the top priority, is getting solutions from the community and the teachers and making, and communicating back. There's no reason why we can't set up systems to communicate better.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, it's amazing that this question doesn't get asked at every meeting that we ever attend. Uh, our current board enables a district culture that holds parent and teacher input in pretty low regard. Community engagement is seen as an undue burden and communication is an afterthought. You only need to look at some of the surveys that go out, uh, some of the emails that go out. And, and frankly, the, the bunker, uh, central command style of leadership that we have, where no dissent is brokered. Our, uh, district advisory committees, uh, if they have a voice, uh, they're often, uh, shut down. Uh, you cannot go against anything. You can't be anything other than a cheerleader for, uh, the agenda at hand. And, um, it, it's, it's going to hurt us in the long run. The bad faith will hurt our engagement with parents and voters. And also puts our school at risk for litigation as transparency, uh, is, is such a problem that, uh, there are public records acts, uh, requests happening all the time to get the information that's being held close and not shared with the community.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Um, I, I think it's really important for a district to be very, very communicative and, and very open, and that would be my goal. I don't have, um, an, an understanding of, uh, the level of, of unresponsiveness. I mean, I, I try to be somebody who is incredibly involved and I know that that, and it's one of the things that we always say when we're on any PTA committee or any committee that says, "If we don't know how things are, if we in those circumstances don't know exactly what's happening, then how does everybody else?" And everybody else needs to know how things function, how to get things done, why things are done the way they are. And I think it's very important to make people and parents feel that they understand things and why they happen the way they happen. Because if you don't understand it, then frustration sets in, then, uh, then people really feel uncomfortable. You don't, you want them to understand how their kids are getting educated and it, and be along as a partner in that endeavor.
Thank you. Mrs. Leon Vazquez.
Yes, well, though, no, I agree. I mean, there has to be a level of communication out there. I think as a board member and as a part of the district, we have tried as best, uh, ways we could in terms of getting the information out. Part of it is being able to, of course, we have the board meetings where people can come and, and, you know, give their, their comments under specific action items or public comment. The other is a lot of the schools have networking that happens within their particular schools that we hope that, that with their, you know, committees on, you know, um, district, what is it, their school-site council meetings and PTAs, they're able to voice their, come back to their leadership and the leadership meets with our district leadership and the word comes back to us in that way. Because there's no way that you can have an open forum with thousands of people online. So we're trying to, to be able to be as, as transparent as we can and open up the, the voices for everybody to take part. As it was, um, when the last survey went out, they pulled it right away because many of us on the board, you know, reacted to that and the, the superintendent pulled it and they had to kind of go back and we figured it out. So the, you know, the, I think they are listening. It's a new, I think, um...
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. May.
Important to have parent input, and, uh, one way, of course, is to pay more attention to what parents say at board meetings. And another, uh, area of concern is, um, the social justice standards, which generally seem to be a good thing. But, uh, if you delve into the details, there are standards that may be, um, against certain people's religious beliefs and so on. For example, I just stumbled into something for a third-grade, uh, class where the teacher was, uh, to discuss something about two moms. Okay, well, I don't think this sort of thing needs to be in the social justice standards. If parents really knew all the details, I think some of them would be uncomfortable. So we need to be transparent, let them really, uh, have more of a voice. And also, being an anti-racist district is a good thing, but I think overemphasis on this is, is counterproductive.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman.
Let me answer the question simply at first. The, the criticism is real. Uh, the board lacks true public input and chills debate of ideas and points of view. There are public meetings, but it seems like all the votes are worked out in advance. There are public comments, but time and time again, the constituent is thanked for their input and no action is taken and no accountability for failing to follow through. Uh, you can ask yourself, why are so many candidates running this time? Why would someone like myself take time out of my legal practice to run for school board? It's this issue. It's this issue largely. Um, I want to give parents a, a seat at the table. Uh, there needs to be communication with the community for the board to function well, uh, and there needs to be input from our parents who are often very informed and want to be involved.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
Thank you. This question about the board being unresponsive to parent emails is not really simply a question of logistics. This is about values. It's about belief systems. And so let's reverse engineer this question. Where does this come from? One might say it really lacks the, the idea of servant leadership. And servant leadership is a philosophy whose main idea and goal is to serve instead of having individual or organizational self-interests. So who really is the main priority when these practices are occurring at the board level, right? So I think what we want to do is return to a sense of ethics, a sense of values, and ask those questions very deeply. Because without that, corrupt practices do fall in line when you have these kinds of failures to communicate and lacks of transparency. So this is a values and an ethics issue, not simply a logistics communication issue. So we can do better than that.
Thank you. So we're at the last item, which actually is not a question, but an opportunity for you. So here it is. It's basically a request without referencing the other candidates, and this is underlined in my script. Look into the screen and tell us why you should be elected to the Board of Education. Why should voters vote for you? And I will begin with Jennifer Smith.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, I have worked incredibly hard for many, many years. I have been deeply, deeply involved with our community, with parents at every school site, at every, with teachers, uh, the kids, administrators, staff. I have worked collaboratively. I will work together with all the board members, all the administrators, all the teachers, the kids, and everyone at every school site to be able to bring kids better enriching an education. That's my goal. That's what I want. That's what I want for my kids. That's what I want for your kids. I have worked, I have not only worked for my own kids, but I've worked for every child in this district for the last 10 years. I have brought revenue to the district. I have brought new buildings to the district. I ha- I have, uh, and I will work towards all of those things for as long as I can serve my community.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dawn May.
Oh, um, I want to see, um, policies that will empower pupils and teachers, um, and will, um, promote wired technology, health harmony, true justice, and academic success. And, um, I want to be very accessible. I, I want to be a person of integrity and courage and use a lot of common sense and make a lot of suggestions that other people might not make because they may not have the experience I have and the background I have. There are many little small things that we often overlook. Just something as, as trivial as unsticking a stuck window. Um, there, there are so many little things and also big issues, okay? And we also have to look at the big picture, such as the correlation between certain practices and certain outcomes. There is a definite correlation between, uh, the, the increase in exposure to wireless radiation and, uh, increase in special education services.
Thank you. Maria Leon Vazquez.
Well, I hope you, I get your support, um, in coming back to the board. I think I've brought in, uh, many years of, of my legal training, my community experience, my professional work from the community college arena to bring in a lot of programming to the district and, and being a partner with this district. Um, there's many children here that have not been as successful. There's many, there's a big diversity in this, in this district. And I would like to continue to make sure that all children will get a good education out of this and will have choices at the end of their 12, 12 to 13 years in this district to go on to good, um, four-year schools, two-year schools, or a trade, if that's, if that's the case. My two children went to the school district. I now have a grandson that started kindergarten, so I'm in here. I'm in here. I, I am involved in this district. So I hope that, that I've gotten a lot of endorsements and all of it has come from the, I think, the great work that I've done in the last 20 years in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Johnson.
Thank you. Uh, I did not seek any endorsements except that of the teachers' union, and I received that. Very happy to accept that. You just heard some of my fellow candidates talk, uh, speak forcefully about transparency. That is a pillar of my campaign. The other one is accountability, something we haven't quite hit on as much as I'd like. We're under a fiscal stabilization plan by the county, despite being, uh, probably one of the second, maybe third wealthiest districts in the county. So as I come onto the board, I will hold us to a much higher standard for fiscal matters, for budget review, for what prioritizations we're making. The other thing that we didn't talk about, but I will talk about, is that I will defend the arts. I'll defend immersion. I'll also be a voice for Malibu, um, something that, here we are talking about the district and, uh, it really hasn't even come up. And it's a, a pretty critical issue for one whole huge section of, of our constituency, uh, who are looking to be independent someday.
Thank you. Esther Hickman.
So why I would be elected, um, I, I'm a parent first and foremost, and my child is, I moved back to Santa Monica so that my child could have an education. I had an extraordinary, um, public school education in this district, and I want every child in this district who goes to school in this district to have that experience, and we have the wealth. And in terms of fiscal accountability, um, it's, um, there are so many things that have been poorly planned in the operating budget and the use of bond money that the taxpayers authorized. That's not something that I, um, as a board member would tolerate or support the abuse of tax dollars. I grew up in Malibu. I would speak on behalf of Malibu and Santa Monica. And I am an excellent community builder and great at facilitating solutions within the community.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman. Jason Feldman.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I bring experience to the school board. I've served on, uh, boards before, the Planned Parenthood Board in Orange County, for example. Uh, my background, my mother was a teacher. I'm the parent of two, uh, children that attend school in the district, one of which has special needs. I want to be, uh, uh, an advocate for equity and I want to give special needs parents a seat at the table. I think I bring, as a civil rights attorney, I think I bring, uh, perspective on social justice that I think can, can help our district. And, you know, when I'm on the, the, the board, I, I have one objective, and that's to make our schools as, the, the best that they can be. There's, there's no other personal agenda or interest that I have. Transparency, accountability, and new priorities for, for our budget to get us through this fiscal crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keith Coleman.
Thank you and good evening. You know, I'm running to focus in on student safety, innovation, and well-being. I've applied my experience as an education innovator, a policy advisor, an angel investor, a mental fitness coach, to focus in on providing a psychologically safe environment for students to support their learning. Additionally, as a visiting scholar at Media X at Stanford, was, focuses in on the human sciences and the inter- intersection with technology, I bring an innovative interdisciplinary background that can bring new vision to the district. It's evident that the status quo is not working and that there's change that is needed. We need diversity of thought. We need innovative vision, and this is what I bring to the table. Public-private partnerships are a part of my angel investor experience, and those resources can be helpful to bring the type of programming and support for teachers as well as students as we move forward. This is about servant leadership, and I'm here to serve.
Thank you. Let me move to, uh, my closing remarks. Uh, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund and Santa Monica Malibu Council of PTAs, we want to thank all of you for taking part in tonight's candidate forum and for stepping forward to run for office. We'd also like to thank, uh, Kathy Jatili, our timer, and Natalia Zerneskaya, our forum tech administrator. To all of you who are viewing this, the forum has been livestreamed to YouTube and will be available for replay on the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica channel. We encourage you to take... We encourage you to take the opportunity to inform yourselves, go to our YouTube channel and watch our candidate forums for Board of Education, City Council, and Rent Control Board. For more information on both local and state elections, we encourage you to check out Voters Edge at www.votersedge.org. It is the League of Women Voters' nonpartisan online guide to federal, state, and local elections. We invite you to join the League and the SMM PTA Council of PTAs on Wednesday, October 7th, for our final candidate forum of this election season. This one for the Santa Monica College Board of Trustees. We also invite you to join us on Sunday, October 4th, for our final Santa Monica City Council Candidate Forum, co-sponsored by the Committee for Racial Justice and the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Education Fund. All council candidates have been invited to participate in one to our forum. To find a listing for these forums and the registration links, please go to the League website at www.lwssanta monica.org. We want to thank our audience for your interest. It truly takes all of us to make democracy work. And remember, elections are won by those who vote. Thank you and have a good evening.